Good morning Commissioners and welcome to the Workshop of the Orlando City Council for August 11, 2014. We have two workshops today. The second one will be on Tinkerfield, but the first one is going to address the Orlando International Airport Master Plan and an update to that. OIA is the 13th busiest airport in the country. We have over 800 arrivals and departures every day. You know that we have 59 million visitors to our area last year and a large percentage of those visitors come through Orlando International Airport and it's the first impression of the city beautiful. And I flew back in from Colorado last night and I always marvel at how wonderful it is to come through our airport and what a great statement it is as an introduction to our city. With us today are the Vice Chairman of the Board, Dean Asher. Dean, thank you for being here. Phil Brown, the Executive Director. Phil, would you introduce the rest of your team that's here? And then we'll have Tom Chandler, who's the Aviation Authority's General Consultant, give an overview of the master plan update.
Good morning. Thank you Mayor, members of the City Council. Today, we're going to give you a presentation on our master plan process. This will be for your information, for you to consider the issues that we're planning. This is a 20-year look at facilities at Orlando International Airport. It's something that ultimately will be going to the Federal Aviation Administration. It's scheduled to come back to you at the end of September, on September 29th, when we've had all the public comment and finalized the report. Following that approval, it'll be sent to FAA, in which they will look at certain elements and approve certain elements of it. So this morning, I have Tom Chandler, who is the Chief Operating Officer of Schenckel &amp; Schultz, who is our General Consultant, who'll be giving the presentation. Also have members of our staff in the audience who participated in the work. Stan Thornton, our Chief Operating Officer, our Senior Director of Engineering and Planning, Daven Remaki, a senior murk, who's a consultant but has been working a great deal on the outreach and the coordination of all the issues. Miko Huntinen from our Planning Department is here as well. Have I forgotten anybody? And Brad Freel, who is our Director of Planning, sorry, he's relatively new to the director slot and hiding in the back. And Rod Johnson from our Community Affairs, our Community Public Affairs Department. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Chandler to begin the presentation.
Good morning, Mayor Dyer, members of the Council. Pleasure to be here this morning. This is about three and a half years' worth of work that we're going to move through quickly today, but I'd like to summarize and start at a high level and look first at the strategic goals of the Authority, because these were really the drivers of the master plan work: exceeding the expectations of the traveling public, collaborating with our airport and our community partners, looking for opportunities to foster economic development for the region, continuing to operate and maintain world-class facilities, and doing all that in a fiscally responsible manner. So those were the high-level driving strategic goals for the master plan. And a little bit different, we've got a planning horizon of 20 years, so we're looking out to the year 2031 with this work that we've done. And there's really three primary components of the master plan work. The first is the aviation forecast, which allows us to look at the capacity of our existing facilities and the impact that that demand will have on those existing facilities, and then turn that into a 20-year capital improvement plan. And all of that information then gets documented in what we call an Airport Layout Plan, which shows the existing and the future facilities at the airport. So moving through some of those pieces, let's first start with the passenger forecast. Again, this is the driver of all the work. If you look at the chart, the dark line to the left with the peaks and valleys indicates how we've grown at Orlando International over the years. And then to the right of that, there's three dashed lines which indicate our high, our medium, and our low forecast that's projected going forward. And I'd make two points. First of all, just as there are peaks and valleys in terms of how we've grown historically, as we can move forward into the future, there's going to be peaks and valleys, even those are currently shown as straight lines. And currently, we're projected to grow domestically at about 2.3%, but more importantly, internationally, we're projected to grow at about 5.9%. So we take the forecast and we move in and begin to look at the capacity of our existing facilities. And if you look at the 14 terminal operation systems on the left of the slide, those are systems that GOA has tracked over the years for capacity and the level of service measurement factor is shown on the right. And the summation of that exercise simply was that if we did nothing more to our existing facilities, we would be able to handle 40 million annual passengers moving through the North Terminal Complex. And so the Board challenged us and simply said, "Is there any additional work that can be done? Are there additional projects that can be done to the North Terminal that would allow us to increase capacity at all?" And so what I'm going to walk through are four different projects that we have determined will allow us to move from 40 million annual passengers up to 45 million annual passengers as a finite capacity for the North Terminal. And those projects are the ticket lobby expansion on the third level, which allows for self-service check-in, additional infrastructure for future technology, and then we will be upgrading the interiors of the third floor, simply because they haven't been touched in about 25 or 30 years. Additionally, we're upgrading the baggage handling system to an inline system to handle the future demand. And then the projects on Airside 4, this is really a transitional project, and this is where we're going to deal with the growth for international traffic that I spoke about earlier. We will be adding four additional gates on the 90s wing, which you can see in the lower left-hand corner. Additionally, we're going to expand Customs and Border Protection by 10,000 square feet, which will give us greater opportunity to facilitate passenger processing. And then again, Airside 4 has not been touched for 20 to 25 years, and so there's an interior upgrade and refurbishment that would go along with this project. And the last project is one that you probably have heard and seen in the media, the South Airport APM-ITF Complex. There's really two factors that I want to focus on here. This is a project that will allow for seamless intermodal connectivity at Orlando International, but more importantly, it's a capacity reliever project for the North as well. To the left portion of the slide, you can see the site plan, and this project will sit directly south of the mid Crossfield taxiway or just south of the current facilities in the North. The renderings on the right are simply aesthetic images of what we believe this facility will look like, but it will be connected from the south to the north with an automated people mover system. It's about 500,000 square feet in terms of the overall facility. You can see 2,400 space parking garage. It has passenger drop-off and also will allow for remote check-in at this location to, again, offload capacity from the North. Additionally, in the master plan, we look at our airfield capacity with four active runways. Kind of the bottom line is, we have more than enough runway capacity to accommodate the forecasted traffic growth in the 20-year planning horizon. And then additionally, we looked at the implications of the new South Airport planning concept on the airfield. And so all of this information is then pulled together in what's termed an Airport Layout Plan, which is what you see on the right of the screen. And again, just to orient you, at the top of that screen, you've got the existing North Terminal Complex with the four air sides. Directly south of that is the future planning concept for the South. And the purpose of this document is, this is what we use to facilitate interaction with FAA. It's basically used to determine which projects are going to be eligible for future funding. And then finally, we are pulling all of this work together in a capital improvement plan. You can see the objectives: to improve the facilities, to get to 45 million annual passengers in the North Terminal, allow us to improve our international processing, and also continually to look, or continue to look for opportunities to generate non-aviation revenue. So there's really two parts to this capital improvement plan. Those at the top of the slide, maintaining the current facilities, you can see the dollars associated with that, and then the two projects at the bottom, support capacity growth. The bottom line, this is a five-year capital program that will encompass about $1.1 billion. And so at this point, we have gotten all we can out of the North Terminal. We need to begin to look to the South for future expansion and future facilities. And what I'd like to do now is talk a little bit about our current thinking as far as the future for OIA in terms of the master plan. And so, again, at the top of the slide, you're looking at the existing North Terminal Complex, and just south of the mid Crossfield taxiway, we've got the planning concept for the South Terminal Complex. On the left, you can see the metrics associated with capacity, with gates, and with the parking capabilities. And I would simply point out, there's really four fairly significant differences in terms of the future thinking. One has to do with the 120 gates that would be in the South. Those would be both international and domestic as swing gates. In other words, each gate can be used either internationally or domestic. So that's a fairly significant change from the North. Probably most important, this concept allows for seamless multimodal connectivity through the intermodal terminal, and I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail. The demand and the incremental expansion capability of this particular design concept, I think, is significant, as well as our ability to incorporate aviation transit-oriented development in the South Complex as well. So it's probably important, at this point, to go back and look at a little bit of the history, and you've got three slides across the top showing the high-level site plans. This is what we started with in 2004 on the far left. I'll call that the semicircular planning concept. The planning for rail has been in the master plan at OIA for over 25 years, and one of the significant differences between these three plans is how we've incorporated rail. And so if you go back to 2004, the thinking then was simply with, when you look at the red dot, the intermodal terminal was outboard to the east, so there wasn't this seamless connectivity that we're now talking about. In addition, we could only handle two forms of rail out of that station. And so in 2010, with the advent of the high-speed rail discussions that began in the community, we went back and we started to think about whether the master plan was really current and whether the train station was in the right location, which led to moving it to the center to provide that seamless intermodal connectivity. And the current thinking in 2014 is really a much more linear concept, central connectivity with the intermodal terminal. And some of those changes are driven not only by the rail discussion, but quite frankly, also changes in the airline industry itself. And so when you look at the metrics, you can see that in the chart below, in terms of the passenger capacity, in terms of the types of gates. I'd point out that we really, again, are looking for non-airline revenue generating opportunities. And so in the concept of hotels, concessions, transit-oriented development at the airport, much more robust opportunities in this 2014 thinking and plan than where we were in 2004. And then finally, when you look at the rail capacity, the ability to handle four modes of rail on a single platform is a significant advance. And so when you look at this at a high level, start with me at the center of the plan. That is the intermodal terminal, so that's where the train connectivity will take place. You'll have the ability to ride an automated people mover to the North Terminal Complex. We'll be able to handle all aboard Florida. We'll be able to handle commuter rail as well as light rail off of a singular platform at that central location. And then as you move outboard, you've got two linear flanking parking garages of 10,000 cars each, the possibility at some point in the future of two hotels in the 400 to 500-room capability. You then have your commercial curbs and your private vehicle curbs. And as you move outboard, you've got landside Terminal C, landside Terminal D, and those are in direct contact with our airside terminal gates, allowing for really a much more robust and enhanced passenger and customer service experience on the airside of the terminal. And so the question that we're continually asked is, "Well, when does this happen?" The Board is really focused on two demand-driven trigger points that would allow us to commence the design and the construction of the South Terminal Complex. When we achieve 40 million annual passengers at the North on a rolling 12-month average, as well as 2 million annual passengers arriving through the international processing at Customs and Border Protection, those are the two trigger points. And so when you look at the phasing of this 120-gate complex, the thought is, we would start with an initial 16 gates, which is what you see in the upper left-hand corner. And then in terms of the incremental growth that's possible, you can add another 16 gates to the North, moving down to the lower left. Building out Terminal C accommodates 60 gates, and then at some point in the distant future, the completion of the overall master plan up to 120 gates. And so this slide simply points out some of the strong attributes and the thinking relative to the planning concept for the South Terminal. First and foremost, the ability to integrate multi-modes of transportation, air-ground, and rail at a singular location is unprecedented in this country. We've looked for opportunities to expand non-airline revenue generating opportunities, meaning that post-security now, there's going to be a much more robust concessions in retail and customer service focus on the new concept. And I think that just in general, there's a renewed and a much greater emphasis on the customer service enhancements at OIA in terms of this concept and the planning. I would summarize the attributes of the South Terminal as simply being much more efficient, much more flexible and adaptable, and finally, has the ability to expand on-demand. So in the last couple of months, specifically the end of June, we had our community outreach. We've been at three different locations on three different days. We were at UCF for a session, we were at Odyssey Middle School for a session, and then the final session was held at Heritage Park down in Kissimmee. And the purpose was just to do outreach to the public agencies, public officials, as well as the general public, to gather comments and input, and then incorporate that into the master plan. And so in the context of where we are for next steps, we will be going back to the GOA Board. That's a typo. The Board meeting is actually on the 10th of September, not the 17th. But then we will be back to City Council for your final approval on the 29th, and then submit our final deliverables to the FAA and FDOT on September 30th. With that, I have a distinguished cast of people here that would be more than willing to answer questions.
Thank you, Tom. I've had the opportunity to participate and see this a number of times, but I think this is probably the first time that many of the Council members have been exposed to this. But I would like to reiterate that I consider the Aviation Authority one of the great institutions in our community that really puts a lot of thought and planning into everything that it does. This isn't a, "What's going to happen next year?" This is, "What's going to happen 20 years from now?" And the acquisition of the airport itself, and then the acquisition of additional property and giving us opportunities to expand that airport. It's one of the biggest assets that we really have in our community, that and the University of Central Florida. I think if I was asked to pick two, that's the two that I would pick. So I deeply appreciate all the thought and energy that goes into making sure that we're 20 years ahead of the game.
Thank you.
Mr. Sheehan?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Tom. I had a couple of questions. Now, the people mover, I was wondering how that was going to integrate, because you have the rail coming into the South Terminal, so the people mover is going to take people to the North Terminal?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And now, the North, you know, is of course, you know, kind of antiquated. Will that give you an opportunity to do some renovations perhaps to the North Terminal? Are there any plans for that?
Well, I think you saw in the beginning of the presentation, kind of our near-term thinking to kind of upgrade the ticket lobbies and some of the other areas to, and Airside 4 is another one, but we will be bringing those areas up to speed. But then I think, long-term, again, that terminal in the North is not going away, so we're going to continue to need to maintain that world-class facility in the North, as well as the expansion to the South.
Okay. Sometimes when visitors come in, it's a little confusing with the B-side and the A-side and different things like that. Will there be signage to make it clear when people come off the rail that if they're a North-side ticket or a South-side ticket, so there's not confusion there?
Yeah, I mean, it's a great question, and that's certainly something that, as part of this master plan and thinking, we have been all over the signage piece. I mean, getting people quickly through the terminal and directly through the terminal has always been one of our hallmarks, so yes, we are clearly focused on that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
Great, thank you. Great presentation, and I agree with the Mayor, you guys looking out so far in advance. I think sometimes it's a little bit challenging for us. Let me, a couple of quick questions come to mind. The 40 million, 2 million triggers. Where are you now in those triggers? I know we're at 40 million, but where are you, and did I miss that someplace here?
No. Okay, so the direct answer to that question is, we're very much approaching the 2 million annual passengers on the international side, and I indicated that that's really where we're seeing the most robust growth. Currently, in terms of the rest of it, we're at about 35 million annual passengers, so I mean, we've got 5 million additional passengers until we get to that 40-point.
Okay, and based upon your projections, I'm looking there, but it looks like that's going to happen pretty soon.
I think if you look at the compound growth rate and assume that that's kind of straight-lined, and you think about some of the things that are going to happen in this community with some of our partners over the course, yes, I think that in the, a five-to-six-year period of time, we could possibly be at that trigger point.
Yeah, because I think I remember 2010 and some of the things we talked about when they were going to begin to start triggering, and in some sense, it seems like it's forever away, and other senses, it seems like it's tomorrow. So, two things that come to mind, one, along with what Commissioner Sheehan said, one of the concerns I see, and I don't see it because it's probably much more involved in the details, is I go from the northern terminus to the southern terminus, and then I get to a people mover that moves around the outside. I'm looking at the master plan, that's 120 gates. So how am I connecting to the terminus, how am I connecting to the outer rail from the inside? In other words, it appears to be that's probably, could be a quarter-mile walk. Is there something that's moving people?
Yes.
From the center to the outskirts to get to the gates, as opposed to an escalator?
If the question is, "How am I getting from the intermodal terminal out to the airside?", okay, there clearly will be a series of moving sidewalks. We have clearly thought about that whole transition from the intermodal out to the airside. And then one of the things that I did not talk about is that when you're on the airside and looking at the plan that's on your screen right now, there's kind of a magenta line that connects all 120 gates. And so the best example that I can give is if you've been in Detroit, they have a train system internal to the terminal itself. And so we have also thought about and incorporated into the planning concepts that type of technology as well.
Good. When you get to 120 gates on the South Side, where are you in terms of runway capacity?
In terms of runway capacity, we are probably going to be nearing our capability.
Okay, so you've got effectively 25 years' worth of runway capacity?
We've got quite a lot of, the one thing that we are not short of at the airport is runway capacity.
Okay. Okay, because I know, I mean, that's the greatest concern from the community will be the number of increased planes, which is an issue that we have to kind of address. I think you guys are doing a good job addressing that. But the second is, are you going to have to acquire more land to bring in more planes? And if that's the case, then I would imagine that we're probably okay. I mean, you've got the Strategic Air Command runway, so it's not a...
Again, I think that that's where, out of all of the systems that we looked at, where we have the greatest capacity is on the airfield.
Yeah, when B-52s can take off side-by-side, I think we probably have enough capacity on there.
I think we're good.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your, what's the work you guys have done?
Thank you.
Mr. Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for such a great presentation. Talking about capacity, about how many employees do we have at the airport currently?
I'm sorry?
Employees at the airport?
Close to 10,000.
Just an estimate.
The Aviation Authority has approximately 650, but if you looked at all badged employees, it's upwards of 18,000.
Talking about capabilities, because that's something that people are really, especially people from Orlando. Projections, what are we looking forward to in terms of the next 20 years? As you're talking about the plan for expansion, employment-wise, how's this going to affect? I mean, have we seen much greater opportunities to bring more employment? And if so, is this parking that is being created, is going to host some of those spaces for employees? And if so, that rendering that you just showed, I see a light rail highlight in the menu. Is that for entry and exit of, I mean, the Seminole Quarter or any other ways in order to bring employees to the terminal, I mean, to the airport?
I think the answer to the question, yes. We are clearly planning for enhanced employment that would go along with a facility of this size. I mean, near-term, there's going to be a significant amount of increase in employees down there just for the construction associated with the projects that are going to be going on for the next three or four years. But in terms of the rail connectivity, what we're planning for, I mean, even though there isn't particularly a direct light rail solution on the table, yes, we're looking for connectivity from the North as well as the South, and the ability to integrate into the airport, whether it's rail, whether it's buses, all of that's being considered in terms, all mass transit is being considered in this master plan, and with a look to the enhanced employment that will be part of it.
That's what I'm getting at, because we're trying to work on a project on the Seminole Quarter in order to allow the opportunity to bring mass transit to the airport and accessibility to our constituents, those that work at the airports. I was wondering if that was part of the plan.
I think that you need to feel comfortable that any and all forms of mass transit have been thought about and planned for in this master plan concept.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Hild, uncommissioning?
Yes, I just want to thank Mr. Brown publicly and Mrs. Carolyn Fennell for inviting me out to OIA once I was sworn in, and briefing me on this project. And I was encouraged by Mr. Brown with his goals for minority participation into this project, and also as Commissioner Ortiz was speaking on, as far as employees. So I think this is a great project. I'm looking forward to coming to Orlando, and especially all aboard Florida. So I just wanted to publicly state that, that I do believe that OIA has great intentions on, as they are being, our great stakeholders in employing those here in the community, and with contracts locally.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Rings?
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning. Thank you, sir, for your presentation. How will you handle the rental cars, the taxis, and the bus services with this expansion?
I will tell you, the best way to answer it is that it's going to be handled much in the same way that it's handled now. There'll be separate lots, separate areas for taxi hold, things of that nature. Rental cars, we're already planning on how they could be incorporated into these parking garages with the turnaround facilities and the other amenities associated with it. So the idea is to provide those customer service amenities that people do cherish in the North and expect in the North, that they will be able to handle those in similar fashion in the South. Some of that planning, just as we have enhanced and improved, I think the planning concept, we'll be looking at ways to enhance our taxi, our bus holds, our rental car facilities. But again, the core components of how those are handled at OIA will be incorporated into this planning.
Okay. And then please describe or outline any future public meetings, because the ones that I've seen there, I didn't see anything on the west side or southwest side of Orlando or Orange County. And so are there going to be any other future public meetings addressing this particular expansion project?
I believe that we have conducted all of the public meetings that we're going to hold for this.
So that was the, I think, three that were outlined here?
Yes, that was the three that was outlined.
Okay. So I guess for any other public input or anything like that, they're going to need to come to the Aviation Authority's Board Meeting?
Either to City Council or to the Aviation Authority Board Meeting to get additional input.
Okay. Now, will your parking garages have a better connectivity to the terminal? And by that, I mean, it's really hard coming out of the parking garage, going underneath and coming back up. Is there a plan that will actually take you from the parking garage across to the terminal and then out that way?
Yes. The... Yes. The connectivity from the parking garages to the landside terminal is via a series of bridges. There's actually three or four, but it's a much more direct connectivity than what you currently experience in the north.
Okay. Will we correct that that's in the north now? Will we be able to do that to provide for better connectivity as well?
I don't see in the thinking right now, a change to the existing concessions in the north.
Okay. What type of relationships do you have with the TSA to speed up checkpoint status?
We work with them as much as we can. I'm going to flip this to you.
Every day. We work pretty closely with them on reconfiguring when we can. The checkpoint, we have been very supportive of their pre-check program, which is a program that people can now sign up for. There's a charge of eighty-five dollars for five years, but it puts people through the lanes where they don't have to take off their shoes, they don't have to pull out their computers, they will have to pull out their cell phones and put them in. But it's, the other things that we're also trying to do as a part of our customer service initiative in working with TSA is have some baseline training for all those employees that are the primary contact for passengers, so that they can focus on being attentive to the passengers. And so, that sometimes, you know, the lines, for the most part, they look long, but they're not as long as you go through. But you have the, what we call the optics of seeing a large group of people standing in some place when you first walk into the terminal, that's intimidating. So, people normally gravitate to that. So, we're trying to think of some other options that we can sort of have passengers spend some more time on this side of security, not missing their flight. But it's all an effort that we work pretty closely with TSA on. So, it's a balance of making sure that you've got the adequate security and safety, but also making sure that people get processed quickly.
Well, it kind of seems that the staging area for these passengers going through the checkpoint gets really bogged and clogged up pretty quickly, just as you described. But is it because of the space that they're operating in, that they just don't have enough room?
We have limited space on both of the checkpoints. On the east side, where the Hyde atrium is, we usually have a little bit more space. It's really more cramped on the west side, which was the older part of the terminal. And we've looked at ways of expanding that. But in order to do that, I'll have to take out concessions on either side, either Disney or Universal. That's a pretty large revenue generator. So, what we're trying to do is focus on things from a technology standpoint, that people can get processed quicker, that we know when groups from conventions come into the airport, we give advance notice, so that TSA can staff up for that peak, put people out there checking the documents, get that folks through that process, and sort of give them an idea of what the timeframe is. One of the things that we're looking on is ultimately being able to monitor the time with a technology system of how long it really takes through and giving passengers that information, so that they know from a reasonable standpoint what it's going to take them to process through.
Okay. Let's see here. Okay, coming into the airport property, how does one access terminals C and D? We know A and B exist, and the airlines are listed for the respective terminals and that kind of thing. So, where would we be coming in, once we come into that particular area?
Okay, I mean, it's a great question. And clearly, signage and directional signage as part of this overall master plan concept is going to be critical. I mean, I think that when you think about arriving from the north and the A and B terminals, you're going to have similar signage on the south access road as you come in from the south. But we're also going to have to redo that signage in the north to keep you on that main access road and get you down to terminal C and D. So, I'm kind of waving my hands right now and talking in generalities, because these are specifics that haven't necessarily been detailed, but they've clearly been thought through. So, again, the signage and the directional wayfinding is a critical piece of some of the next steps that we're going to have to get involved with.
Okay. And then, what is the timeline or schedule for the initial build-out after all the approvals are in, and you're ready to go?
Well, we are looking at a three-to-four-year construction period on this initial phase in the south. This south automated people mover, intermodal terminal facility that I talked about, that's a three-to-four-year construction cycle.
Okay. And then, for that build-out, minority participation is always a concern.
Correct.
And so, what are your efforts to improve upon that as well?
I'm going to ask Stan to address this, but I think we've got a pretty robust program that, quite frankly, was tailored after a lot of the work that was done on the venues. So, I think we've had some history to be able to look at and really develop a good program.
Yes, Commissioner, one of the things we've done differently this time is, we've broken up the work, especially starting with the designers. Instead of having these large design teams come in, and you get whoever just happens to be on the team, we picked separately the lead architects, and then we picked four major subconsultant areas that, along with that selected architect, we, the authority, selected the subconsultants, so that we would get better participation from the community. And there, you are only competing against your peers. For example, there was civil, structural, electrical, mechanical, all competing against each other. I'm pleased to say that everything we've done, we've exceeded our goals. Our goals are anywhere from twenty to twenty-five percent. We're in the mid twenties to thirty ranges on our projects right now. The same thing going to the south, we've hired two construction managers at risk. One is a joint venture of Turner Keewitt that's going to do the ITF. The other is Hensel Phelps, who's going to do the APM terminal piece down there. And through them, we're able to break down the work finer, so we get better participation, smaller projects, so it's not just these massive projects that only large, out-of-town contractors can compete on.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Commissioner Gray.
Thank you. Tom, I don't know if this is you or the GOAT team, just offside of the topics, the Service Plaza, the Toll Plaza on the beach line.
Mm-hmm.
We've been talking about renovating, removing, replacing. Where are we with that, the Toll Plaza, in your discussions with the Expressway?
We have an agreement with the Expressway. They're going to relocate that and combine the two Toll Plazas. So, my understanding, I'm going to look back to Brad to see if we have any more updates on when that, what that schedule is. This is Brad Freel, Director of Planning.
Good morning. With the Expressway Authority, the Toll Plaza, it is to, they're going to remove the one that's where it is today and relocate it with the Toll Plaza that's further to the west that the turnpike currently operates. And so, as part of that, they'll also have some additional ramp plazas, like at Tradeport Drive and further west. But from a timing standpoint, we just executed a, basically a sale and purchase agreement with them that's working through their board, and is, with kind of the reconstitution of their board, it slowed it up a little bit. They've currently had put it out to bid. There was a protest with the Expressway Authority side on the bid, so they're kind of working through some of those processes, I understand. But my understanding was, they're, this fall, going to kind of kick it back off and start moving ahead with the project, so keep our fingers crossed.
Thank you very much. That's all I had, Mayor.
Mayor. Commissioner Stewart.
Yeah, one quick question. I guess probably it's a longer question in terms of the impact on the city, is traffic. If you're bringing in traffic, what are we doing about capacity of the roads that are there? And I guess the notification of providing some master plan in terms of your plans to Metro Plan?
Yes.
I guess, you know, Commissioner Sheehan probably could address that a little bit more closely. But my concern is, it'd be great to have this, but what's happened to capacity on Cimarron? What's happened to capacity on Bond Creek?
Commissioner, everything that we are doing in our master plan is being coordinated with Metro Plan and the other local agencies. So, very clearly, the impacts that you're talking about are being taken into consideration, and we are looking at that as part of the overall growth and expansion that's anticipated here at the airport.
Thank you.
Tom, Phil, thank you for the update, and we look forward to having you back in September.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay, our second workshop this morning relates to Tinker Field. As you know, back, I guess, in January and even during the fall, we had some discussion about the reconstruction of the Citrus Bowl and its footprint having an impact on the playing field, specifically right and center field of Tinker Field. Those last several months, there has been discussion at the Historic Preservation Board and the MPB relating to deviating the field or some portion of the premises as historic. And we have also, I would ask staff to come up with some ideas on how to best, not memorialize, but preserve the history, and to better identify ways that we can honor the history of the events that have taken place at Tinker Field. So, Alan Johnson and I think Kyle are going to update us on all the processes and what the work that's been done in the last several months.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners and audience members. It is nice to be up here to follow up with our Tinker Field discussion. And we have had a lot of discussion since we last met about this, both with individual Commissioners as requested, interested parties that have called us and wanted to discuss it. And of course, we've gone through the MPB process. We will talk about that in just a moment. Again, we're going to, overhead shot of the current Tinker Field, and actually, it actually shouldn't say current, about nine months ago, ten months ago, that would have been a current, as we have progressed with the Orlando Citrus Bowl reconstruction project. And this is the new west elevation. You've seen this. This is pretty much almost all up now. We have a little more still to put up, I think about three pieces I saw going up on Friday. So, the east, I'm sorry, the west elevation is finishing up. And that elevation will handle our, let me go back one more, will handle our vertical transportation that had to be replaced, elevators, escalators, and stairwells. So, thus, because of that encroachment on the right field side, we had to take about two hundred, we reduced it down to two hundred and forty feet on the right field line, and even center field got a little bit of a trim from four twenty-five to four hundred, which caused us to not be able to host competitive baseball on that current site. And the reason for the encroachment, I just mentioned, were the enclosure that we needed to add vertical transportation. We also needed to add pedestrian walkways to get people to that, because we were trying to load fifty percent of our venue capacity, the stadium capacity, from the east and west sides, from the northwest and northeast corners. And that's a better picture of the escalators and the elevators are going to be hidden behind that structure, hidden inside that structure. Since nineteen ninety-nine, when the Orlando Rays left, we haven't had a revenue-producing, or positive revenue-producing tenant since nineteen ninety-nine. Because of that, the Venues Department has not had the ability, or the city has had the ability or the funds, to make capital improvements. And it's difference between repair and replacement. We've done repair and replacement. We've kept it, you know, operational as long as we could with the staff we had and with the equipment we had. But capital improvements, as we know, is a massive undertaking. It's a lot more expensive to do capital improvements. There's long-range planning. You're competing with other projects in the city budget to get that kind of money. So, and I just, you know, carefully remind everyone that the Venues Department and the Tinker Field and the Amway Center and Bob Carr operate as enterprise funds. So, we don't try to ever come back to you for money for the general fund, so that we operate, we're self-sustaining. And we've been able to be proud to be doing that through the years. This has led to the structure reaching a point of failure with a tremendous cost to, and do that capital. I did want to give you a little historical data on the business model that has changed through the years over at the Tinker Field area. We took out concerts from two thousand nine, two thousand thirteen. As you see, we would, lost money every year without the concerts, over a million dollars over the five-year span. And again, the evolution of what's gone out there has, you know, been following the marketplace. We got the calls about these festivals, these concerts, these other events, that they called us, and then we found out, hey, this is a great thing to have out here. It's economic impact to that community. It puts people to work, and it's a great thing to do, including, you know, our largest one now, Electric Daisy. It also works well for pre and post activity for the Orlando Citrus Bowl events, the bowl games, as well as monster trucks. And we have cultural events out there as well. This is a five-year history that will show you that how the number of events have changed, and especially the attendance numbers, what's really telling us. You know, six thousand people came to events other than baseball, and then we had a thousand people come in twelve and thirteen for, years of twelve and thirteen for baseball. So, it's a dramatic shift from the years when you had a spring training site, or you had a minor league team playing there on a regular basis. And this is the total revenue picture, is we put back in the concerts, and we have the bowl games and the baseball games, and we show a positive after getting these concerts, especially a significant jump. And the four sixty-seven, I'm going to talk about a little more, because that's our biggest outdoor event we have out there at Tinker Field. I'm not talking about the Citrus Bowl, but it's our biggest event. It's thirty thousand people. At Electric Daisy, it's a very good event where people travel from all around the state and even the southeast, because it's one of the largest in the southeast after Miami, and has a lot of economic impact to that community. It puts a lot of people to work, and it's an important feature for us to have. And I've got a letter in your packet front that we'll talk about in just a second. This is the graph. Some people like to see graphs. It's the easier show, the revenue and the baseball, and keep that in mind, that we've, how we've grown the other business and been able to do that because of the efforts of the staff to recruit more and more events out to the Tinker Field. At this time, I'm going to ask Doug Hut, excuse me, Hut with Hunt Construction, no, I knew I was going to mess it up. Doug is part of our owners rep team on the Orlando Citrus Bowl and a skilled construction. And we ask him to bring in the presentation of the deficiencies at the stadium. Doug?
Thank you, Alan. Mayor, Commissioners, good morning. Several months ago, the project team was requested to perform an analysis and evaluation of the existing facilities at Tinker Field. In addition to staff we have on-site, we enlisted the help from HNTB, the design architect. And as we went in, began to look at that facility, very quickly we recognized we needed to bring in the expertise of a structural engineer, who is also part of the design team for Citrus Bowl, Walter P. Moore, who provided a diagnostic team to come out and assist us in this assessment. A report culminated from that assessment, which I believe was distributed and made available to the Commission dated July the eighth of this year. From that report, we really focused on the bullet points that you see here, and that was to evaluate any structural deficiencies in that facility, to look at MEP systems and site utility deficiencies that might exist, to evaluate the existing facilities relative to code compliance, and what might be required to bring it up to code compliance by today's standards. And then also to evaluate environmental conditions, and then take all of that information as best we could, and put a rough order magnitude, or an attempt to put a budgetary number to what it would take to get to a bare minimum level to make this facility usable. In doing so, the first item being the structural deficiencies, we really looked at the three principal components that are there, which is the grandstand and really the stadium component itself as one, the front entry building, which is where a lot of the concessions and support components are, and then the original press box. And so, in particular for the grandstand, again, we looked at the structural and the canopy components, the concrete walkways and the railings and seatings that make up those components. The front entry building, which is principally a masonry bearing system with wood trusses on top of it, in similar fashion, same construction for the press box. And again, in the report, there was much more detailed photos and the like, and I recognize they may be a little difficult to see on the screen. But this is a cross-section, or the west elevation shot, that really shows the, how the stadium works and the components relative to the structure. And so, if I can get the mouse to go here, you really see that the cantilevered roof section, which extends out over the seating, it is supported as a structural steel component by these members, which turn into a tapered column and then attach down to the foundation below. below. Those are supported laterally by a structural steel raker beam, which supports the steel frame, but also supports the precast seating sections above. And so the system works together to really form a diaphragm and is the basis of the structure. And so in the, in the next slide that I'll show, I would like to point out what really are rather typical conditions for all of these members that was observed as we went through. The first photo that I will flip to in the next slide shows the condition of the high eve truss, which is kind of the elbow that supports that roof system. There's a photo that we will show, rather typical conditions at this bearing component of the raker beam. There's also a photo that will show the anchorage back to the foundation system. And then finally, a photo that shows generally the condition of the beams and the members that support the cantilever roof section above. And so again, in the upper and left-hand corner of your screen, you see the condition of that upper eve, again, that elbow where the column and the, and the cantilever roof come together. All of those members show extensive corrosion and as noted here in this case, actually section loss of that member. Similarly, as you come down the bottom of the raker beam, extensive corrosion and again, typically section loss at those members. Photo three at the bottom and left of the page shows deterioration of the base plates at the bottom of those columns where they are anchored, bolted and attached to the foundation system. And then the final photo at the bottom right shows a pretty typical condition of the roof beam and support members. In their assessment, Walter P. Moore advised that all of the structural conditions which they observed would have to be repaired prior to this facility being available for use. In the scale of from good to average to poor to failed, the entire structure at best reached a poor condition and as noted in the report, in many cases, is a failed condition. And so I point out, the two top photos in particular show the section loss. And what that means in short is that the member has begun to degrade such that its capacity and its geometry actually is gone. And so an analogy might be envision yourself on the wrong end of the tree branch as the saw begins to go through the thickness of the member. Certainly a precarious place to be. On the underside of the structure, what you see in the photo to the left is the bottom side of the precast riser sections. And then the second photo shows where the precast members approach and actually sit on top of the raker beam. The raker, steel raker, has little stair steps that support the precast, and that's what is noted is the corroded bent plate and the bearing plate for which that precast is anchored. On the top side of the stadium, we note throughout all of the seating sections and certainly across all of the walkway sections, some pretty serious flaking and scaling of the precast components. By contrast, if you were to go walk, and I know many of you have had the opportunity to see the Citrus Bowl, you'll see a nice broom finish and a lot of texture on those components over there that help in water and slip and fall type situations. Virtually all of the cross aisles here have flaked off and are smooth. And in many cases, we're beginning to see the reinforcing steel showing up through those members. And in this first picture, in fact, here's one of these bent plates we talked about that is showing completely through this particular member. In a similar fashion, we see a lot of wear to the stairs, the aisle steps, and in this case, in fact, one of the nosings have completely detached. The seating system are cast iron seating standards with wood seat components. Most of the wood is rotted and has failed. And as you see in this photo, virtually all of the cast iron standards show corrosion and rust. And in fact, in this particular photo, you can see that the plate that attaches back to the precast is very much corroded and is suspect. In a similar fashion, all of the existing rail components where the rail attaches to the precast shows corrosion and, and flaking of the anchorage components for the handrail. The next component is really the front entry buildings. And again, these are a couple of photos that begin to show some of the depth of the deterioration of those pieces. In the first photo there, the dark line in kind of the center of the photo shows where all of the masonry in this particular joint has removed or degraded. You can, throughout that wall, you can see where settlement and cracking is occurring within that structure. As I mentioned, above or the top of that structure are the wood trusses. We see evidence of significant water damage. In this particular case, the damage is extensive enough to where the little metal plates that you see there, which would be pressed into the side and would anchor the truss components together, has failed and has fallen. Over in the original press box, we see conditions of stair step cracking throughout the masonry, likely from settlement and thermal issues over time. But also a very significant condition in the next photo, and that's the evidence of termite frass and pretty extensive damage that we would expect to see as we further got into and began to pull that, those components apart. One of the other bullet points was the condition of the site utilities or the utilities in the facility. As we talked before about the top side of that deck and how it has deteriorated over time on top of the precast bowl. It really is caused in a lot of ways by a lack of water runoff. So what we see when we're out there is you don't see the floor drains that you would see in a more modern facility. Similarly, as you go out toward the second building, toward concessions and that, there's really no way for the water to leave other than running through the sidewalks and the like. In terms of the plumbing and sanitary systems, virtually all of the fixtures are either non-functioning or have been filled in. I have a photo in a minute that will help demonstrate kind of that typical condition. And in fact, last year's events and perhaps previous events out there, temporary facilities have been had to be brought in to service those events. In terms of the electrical systems, even on a precursory base, it appears that a lot of those systems have been patchwork quilted together and cobbled together. And in fact, that electrical service was terminated some time ago as a result of issues like the bottom photo as a, for example. This particular photo was taken in one of the main electric rooms, and these are fairly significantly sized distribution cables to where they have arced and failed. And in fact, you see the scorch marks in, in two locations, kind of in this area and in this area where that system has failed. I mentioned the condition of the plumbing fixtures. This is a representative example where those fixtures have in fact been filled in with grout or cementitious material to ensure they are out of service. In terms of code compliance, as I mentioned before, and you saw some of the photos, virtually all of the railing is suspect within the bowl itself and would have to be replaced. In terms of life safety systems, we would now be required to put a fire protection system in that facility, inclusive of fire alarms, and then exit signage. In terms of ADA accessibility, even though this facility is older and might be considered grandfather, because of the extent of the repairs, it would very quickly jump over the threshold that would be required to bring this facility up to current ADA standards. An example in this photo would be along this spot here, this, the access ramp. The slopes are too steep to meet today's requirements, so all of those type conditions would have to be removed and replaced. Similarly, in order to comply with ADA, we'd have to have a means to access the press box at the top of that stadium structure. So, you know, an elevator system is almost assured to be the solution for that. Environmental conditions, there was a study that the city did in January of this year, and a phase one study was done that showed the construction materials were okay. In other words, things like asbestos or lead paint were not a concern. But as evidenced from the team's walk and as confirmed by their review, virtually any area that had any type of finishes of ceilings or drywall or the like has significant water damage and significant mold infiltration. And so any of the finished materials would have to be removed and disposed of. We would have to treat and have a hygienist come in and certify that any of the mold issues had been remediated and accounted for before we could begin to put back any of the finished components at a later date. And so all of these factors, we tried to evaluate and put into a monetary form. And as with stadium components, a large part of that is the structure. And you see that that clearly, you know, represents a significant portion of what we believe would be an estimated cost to try and repair this facility. It had over $6 million. And I would offer, again, in the report, Walter P. Moore was very clear that they could evaluate based on what they saw. There is the potential that as, you know, certain components got removed or more in-depth studies were done, that even more repair work might be required and would certainly have to be done if these existing components were to be put back into use. As I mentioned, again, all of these are significant, but some of the more significant dollars are in the code component to bring them back up to speed and then the MEP and the electrical systems. So at the end of the day, the estimated value we had for that is, is over $9 million.
Thank you, Doug. Next steps, we recognize that significant events have occurred at Tinker Field, and Mayor Dyer directed our staff to develop a plan to memorialize the significant events that have occurred at Tinker Field. We engaged the Wells Built Museum to research and identify what could be included in a memorial, and we've also engaged Commissioners and other community groups in this process. This is a, kind of give you a location of the map. You see the diamond. And you look in the bottom left-hand side of the picture, the southwest corner there, there's a plaza. And there's a little more, if you have the grandstands removed, the diamond up above, and again, the plaza area, which is where we're going to show you a proposal for memorializing the events that have occurred at Tinker Field. This is an eye-level perspective of it. It's right at the southwest corner, the property where you enter. It's going to be the, one of the main walkways that people will go by and enter into the Orlando Citrus Bowl, as well as into the other activities that occur in the, for the festivals there that we have. Little arrow view back up shows you again the size of it and its significance, and we do have a lot of room there to memorialize those events that have occurred there. And thus, you know, also important to note, this is be open all the time, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We'd have this available. It's not, you know, a museum that has certain hours that are open and closed. It's a, some people can go to on a Saturday or Sunday. And then again, from, you know, it's low maintenance, but it's also a nice memorial to recognize the events that have occurred there. The impact of being designated a structure, that structure as a historical site, it will impact future operations for community development. So there's a, as you know, when, once this is designated, there's a whole process that you have to go through. So it will limit the ability to move quickly out there to make those improvements if, or something comes up in the future that we want to do. The cost to repair, replace, and maintain is too costly for the city. The Citrus Bowl encroachment prohibits baseball from being played there and detrimental to the long-term financial impact to the city and community if the structure remains. And the grandstands is what we're talking about here. It's important to note that. We have in your packets, and I apologize it's not on the slides, but we have letters from Insomniac, and Insomniac is the promoter of the Electric Daisy Concert that occurs every November out there. And they have a strongly worded sentence that I just want to read to you, and you do have it in your packets. But it says, "In the last few years, our event has reached capacity with the current configuration of the venue. If the venue size does not increase, i.e. removing the grandstands, we may have to explore alternative venues." And that means other cities, in some cases, or hopefully, you know, if we can keep it here. We also have letters from Felt Entertainment, that is who puts on the monster trucks every year, and they're wanting to add a second show out there. The first one sells out in January, and this affects their ability to have their pit party and their areas over there. And then we have a letter from AEG, it's a national promoter, who has said to us that, you know, they do festivals all over the state and they could do more festivals here if they didn't. A lot of people say, "Don't the grandstands serve a purpose at festivals?" Not anymore. What you see at festivals across the country are no stands. It's festivals, it's a field. Bonnaroo, Coachella, all those ones now, they don't have grandstands. It's a flat field. They have different stages in different locations, and it's just a very festival feel to it. It's not, you know, people sitting in stands listening to a concert. We also, I think, if Steve Hogan was here, he flew in last night, or Flare City Sports has also expressed how much more they could do if the grandstands were not there for their events that they host over there on, you know, during the season. And I think at this part, I get to call up Kyle for the dirty work.
Good morning, Mayor Dyer and City Commissioners. Kyle Shepherd, Assistant City Attorney. I want to talk to you briefly this morning about what is before you today. You have a landmark application before you this afternoon at City Council. And I want to give you a little bit of the history, just so you know how this got to you. Back in March, the Historic Preservation Board nominated Tinker Field for designation as an Orlando Historic Landmark. They instructed the city's planning staff to do an evaluation of Tinker Field to see whether it met the criteria for landmarking under 65.72 of the Orlando City Code. That report was delivered to the Historic Preservation Board in April, and that, HPB heard the report and made a recommendation on to the Municipal Planning Board. The Municipal Planning Board heard the recommendation of HPB in May. The Municipal Planning Board at that time wanted some more information from the Orlando Venues Department in particular about the status of the structure and also about the operations of Orlando Venues and how Tinker Field impacts the operations of the Citrus Bowl complex. That report, including the report you just heard this morning, was delivered back to the Municipal Planning Board last month in July. And so before you today is the recommendation of the Municipal Planning Board from July, and that's on the consent agenda this afternoon. Just to review real quickly what the MPB did, the MPB was charged by our code to look at the appropriateness of HPB's recommendation. HPB's recommendation was to landmark the Tinker Field complex. Under our code, the term appropriateness means fitting under the circumstances. And so the Municipal Planning Board was asked to see whether, determine whether they think that the HPB's recommendations was fitting under all the different circumstances that you've heard about today. So the MPB weighed the staff report of the Historic Preservation Officer and the evidence that, that he provided in that staff report. But they also weighed the presentation and the reports that you heard this morning from the Orlando Venues Department. That includes the structural condition assessment, site utility conditions, the cost to bring up the building to code and to improve the structure. up the building to code and to improve the structure, make the structure safe, and then also bring up utilities up to code as well, in addition to repair the environmental issues that are out there and so forth. The Municipal Planning Board also took extensive public testimony. So, after doing that, the Municipal Planning Board, what they recommended was that the City Council consider designating the diamond, including the clay infield, playing surface, an Orlando Historic Landmark, not the stadium, not any of the other structures. So, if I can get the cursor to work here. Colloquially, you'll often hear people refer to a baseball diamond meaning the entire field. This is actually the diamond here, shaped like a diamond. This is the part of the infield inside the bases. But the Planning Board suggested landmarking the infield, which is all this clay area back behind second base, down to the first baseline, and then behind the home plate, behind the catcher here, to designate just that portion an Orlando Historic Landmark. So, that's the recommendation from Planning Board before you today. You have a variety of options before you. You can approve the Municipal Planning Board's recommendation. You may modify that recommendation by choosing to designate less of the field or more of the field in the complex. You can also move to designate nothing an Orlando Historic Landmark. One idea that is out there is that instead of designating portions of the complex an Orlando Historic Landmark, that instead you install appropriate historic markers at the site, as you've seen from Alan this morning. Those are some of the options before you. If you modify the Planning Board's recommendation, specifically if you decide to landmark portions of the site, you need to be very specific, because what will happen next is if you choose to landmark a portion of Tinkerfield, that will instruct the city attorney to go and draft an ordinance, and that ordinance will be brought back to you in the next couple of months. There will be two readings and two public hearings of that ordinance, so there'll be additional opportunity for public input. If you decide to designate nothing an Orlando Historic Landmark, there will be no ordinance. The final action will be taken today. So, the decision you make this afternoon will either result in nothing else happening or the city attorney going and drafting an ordinance designating portions of the facility an Orlando Historic Landmark. If you have any questions, we're available.
Question, questions for Kyle. Commissioner Sheehan?
Kyle, I have never seen a historic presentation without the Historic Preservation Officer present. I'm deeply distressed by that. As a person who represents the historic districts in the city, I have never seen the Historic Preservation Officer not here, and only, the only thing that we're presented is the demolition by neglect presentation that we've been given today. I've never seen anything like this. I'm deeply distressed. I understand there may be a difference of opinion on the value of historic preservation. I happen to be a historic preservationist, but we have a process for a reason, and I think that this presentation is ridiculous and is only to show one outcome, and that's only to tear everything down and put up an ugly, strange monument that's already been put together by someone else that we had absolutely no input on. I think this is ridiculous. So, I don't really have a question for you. I just want to talk about the process, the fact that we had absolutely no input from our Historic Preservation Officer, and that, I don't think that we're given the full information, and that I want to be clear that the Municipal Planning Board, which I read, I can read minutes, said to designate the field and the outfield and the backstop or whatever. And we can go back and read that, because they made a very specific recommendation after I'd heard a lot of public input. What that has in common with this weird baseball astroturf thing that's thrown in the corner, I have no idea. How did we get, how do we jump from a determination from the Municipal Planning Board based on a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Board? How do we jump from that to this weird baseball circle thing? How'd that happen? Could you clarify that? How we could jump from-
I can clarify that.
Okay.
And then we'll also get into discussion if anybody actually has a question for Kyle. The area that would commemorate or preserve the history and events of Tinkerfield really has nothing to do with the designation as a historic marker on the infield. So, that was a way to go about, or I had asked staff to come up with a way that we could, I don't think memorialize is the right word, probably preserve and commemorate the history and events that have occurred there, and that's just one idea. We've had a lot of input on different versions of that. I think that the picture that, or the rendering actually said six or seven or something on there, so there's been a number of different iterations. But anybody has additional input into how we might commemorate and preserve the history there? There's no real ongoing purpose for the grandstands. It's going to cost $10 million to upgrade them to even be usable, and what we would use them for, I'm not sure. But if we decide to move forward with this, there is going to be two additional opportunities for public input at the first reading and second reading of whatever ordinance comes out. So, if we adopt the MPB's recommendations today, and ordinance will be drafted, and there'll be additional input given at both of those, and we additionally anticipate having additional public input into whatever the memorial or commemoration would be, as well as we've had input from the Wells Built. So, this is not popping up for the first time today. There's been a lot of input. I assume we're going to have input at Agenda Review from members of the audience here today, so hopefully that illuminates that a little bit. Questions for Kyle?
Commissioner Stewart?
Kyle, following Commissioner Sheehan's recommendation, I'm a little puzzled, so I'm just trying to understand. I'm reading the actual minutes that say that the designation of the diamond, Tinkerfield and the complex, and the board members seconded it, and the motion was approved. Is there another motion outside of this motion that was approved by the action of the MPB?
No, sir. What happened was, is the MPB asked for clarification about what the diamond would entail, and what the Planning Board member said was that while they were referring to it as the diamond, they really wanted the infield designated. So, while the minutes might reflect that it was the diamond, and you might think of that as this area here, it was clear that what they were voting on was a recommendation for the entire infield to be designated.
Is there another, I'm puzzled, so I may ask Commissioner Sheehan, is there another motion someplace that I'm missing?
Commissioner, what you might be referring to is the motion of the Historic Preservation Board.
Okay.
So, the Historic Preservation Board, their motion was, and this dates back to the spring, to include in the landmark ordinance the entire ballpark complex with the historic playing field and the 1963 grandstand as contributing structures, and the remaining structures and objects as non-contributing supporting resources. So, that may be the other motion that you're thinking of.
That's the motion-
From the Historic Preservation Board.
And that motion went to, that recommendation went to MPB?
Yes, sir.
And then MPB then modified that motion to come up with this motion here?
Yes, sir. That's right.
That's correct. So, and I'd like, since Commissioner Stewart asked, I would like to clarify that that recommendation for the grandstands was taken out, so basically, it was dumbed down even more from the original Historic Preservation Board. So, you guys got what you wanted in terms of, you know, making it a gloom and doom scenario to where we couldn't possibly afford to fix the grandstands. So, we've already gotten, you've already gotten whittled it down, and now it's getting whittled down even more to the point where we're not even going to have the field. Now, it's just going to be this weird little baseball diamond, which did not come from the Historic Preservation Board, which did not come from the Municipal Planning Board. This has become some iteration that happened after the fact.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments, but I'm not, I'm not going to let you do that again, so I'm going to, I'm now going to take back over to the floor, if you don't mind.
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Let's go back and look at the options of the four motions that were presented to the MPB. So, it appears that this, the original motion from HB, the HPB was presented to MPB. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it goes back, I mean, we all have our own idea about what is history here and what is not. So, I'm going to prefer to look at the field itself, because I just don't think a 1963 building designates that. I think it's, goes back to 1914, candidly. So, I have a different perception of what I think history is on that area. But back to process, so we now are looking at four motions that came to them, and we effectively have the same four motions available to us today.
Right.
So, we could make the action, or other action that we determine necessary. Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, let me go back and look at a possibility of, is it possible that we could remove this action away from the MPB and move to defer this action at some other time? In other words, could we approve everything except this portion of the minutes and defer this action to somewhat of a later time so we can have a better, clearer understanding of this? And then the second part is that if we were to do that, could we bring that back to under a general hearing, in which case we could actually have that hearing in front of this board about the action sometime in the future prior to going to an ordinance of some sort?
You always have the option of deferring any action that comes before you. This is not a quasi-judicial action that requires you to act within a certain amount of time. So, that option is before you. All you need is a majority vote of the council, and you can defer, table the item if that's what you choose.
And effectively table the item either indefinitely or to a particular time, just that particular item to allow us sometime to be able to look at the choice.
Though, you may just want to ask Alan, there may be time constraints on a decision, so that, you know, he's got an active construction site out there now. He may have financial or other operational issues that would, where he would prefer that you make a final decision today. So, if you might ask him-
But if we're going to tear it down, it's cheaper to tear it down today than it is six months from now. I understand that as a question, and there may be other, I guess, other activity coming up that would be best suited for us to have a clear field out there. Is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner. We're mobilized now out there and could bring back in the crew to do that and be ready before we open for the Florida Classic at the Citrus Bowl, as well as be ready for the Insomniac Electric Daisy in November. There's time enough to do that. If we defer any action on the grandstand itself, I don't know that we could guarantee getting that down and cleaned and ready for the season coming up in November.
Okay, let me go back and ask process again, if you don't mind. Okay. So, by deferring, by approving the action of the MPB, we are technically, and I think, Ma'am, please help me out in terms of the logic of this, that we are actually instructing the legal staff to draft an ordinance that would come back to us at some other future time. Is that correct?
That's one of the options, yes.
I mean, that is an option. I guess that's probably the recommendation from MPB, using their recommendation as the only option, although that's not the case, but-
Well, if you use any action that proceeds with a designation, that requires an ordinance to enable that designation, so yes, Commissioner, that's correct.
So, the question, I guess, back now to Alan in terms of this process, and I'm not, I'm trying to avoid providing an opinion. I'm trying to understand the question. What obligation, why would we, in the time it would take to issue an ordinance and to come back to us at some other future time, where we'd have appropriate time for proper public input, moving as fast as we can? What authority would you then have tomorrow to demolish that place?
I don't know that I have, you know, yeah. Ma'am, you want that one?
Well, the obligation to proceed with the Citrus Bowl plans pre-exists this historic designation effort, and so, we'd have to look carefully at what impact there would be on a designation or lack of designation, as you identify, and the ability to proceed with the contract. But generally speaking, as a general rule, government can't take an action that impairs an existing contract. So, to the extent an action by this council would interfere with the Citrus Bowl obligations, then that would be a tension we'd have to work through. I'm not sure if that answers your question, except to say, it depends, as lawyers like to say.
Actually, let me just answer that. We're not going to demolish the stands until we have to go to City Council to do that.
And I guess that's a question I'm asking would be that a motion to designate the field itself is a motion that moves independently of the demolition of the field. That's the question. So, then the assumption would be if that were the will of the council, that somewhere along the line, there'd be a demolition contract that would come to us to demolish that, to accomplish that task. I'm looking at this as, in terms of process. So, the question would be, if that were the process, would there be, it would not be prudent that if we were to agree with this today, that we would instruct anybody to demolish the balance of that until such time that this actually becomes the designation by ordinance in which we can react to this?
Right.
This is the designation, now what are we going to do with the rest of the property? That's so, so having this background is good background, but I'm looking at terms of process about where we're going.
Mayor, this is an important point. The action before you today is not whether to demolish anything.
That's my point.
The action before you today is whether to designate part or all of the complex a landmark. That's it. It has nothing to do with demolition today. It has only, the only thing before you is that land development application. Do you designate or do you not designate? If you designate, what portions do you designate? That's it.
Okay, now, back to process. I apologize for this, but back to process. So, we draft an ordinance that says the infield is the thing. So, you've got the infield, you know, it's, back to my original point, you can't play a Little League baseball game on that field. That's how small this field will become. So, those who think that you actually can, you cannot do that. So, now it comes back to us in sometime in the future. I've lost my train of thought now, but let me get back to it. This designation portion becomes, again, we are designating, I guess I'm looking for what our action is. Let's assume that this goes through. We're designating that as a historical site, and we're choosing by ordinance not to do some things to that site sometime in the future. That's what we are choosing to do as part of us. We're not doing anything from the state of Florida or from the feds or anything else. We're just, we're saying ourselves, by ordinance, we're not going to do some things, so that if something were to happen sometime in the future, a future council would have this as guidance as to what we're determining as historic on this location. Is that correct?
That's right. This is not a state designation. This is not a federal designation. It's not a county designation. This would be a municipal designation. It's under your land development code that you can designate an Orlando Historic Landmark. If you do that, what that means is that any future work to what you've designated has to be reviewed by the Historic Preservation Board, and you have to grant a certificate of appropriateness before work can be done to whatever you have designated.
Okay. Okay. All right, that's all the questions I've got in process, Mayor.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes, Kyle. I want to address the modification. So, upon the fact, if this is approved today, only the baseball diamond now as we know it to be the field-
Yes, ma'am.
-is landmarked, that's as far as we can go as far as-
That's municipal-
Unless we modify it and create more room for something else, as far as a museum or any other monument. So, today, we would have to landmark that territory for everything to be preserved and saved.
That's right. The Planning Board's recommendation is the infield and the diamond. But you have the option before you to designate whatever you think is appropriate. But the Planning Board's recommendation is the infield.
It's just the field.
The infield.
And Commissioner Hill, that recommendation does not preclude us from doing something else to commemorate the history of this Tinkerfield. That's separate and apart, so if you want to weigh in on some different way to commemorate it other than the circular baseball area that has all the stones that would have different historical events, that is totally separate and apart from that. What we're discussing really today is, do we do the field? Do we do nothing? Or do we do the field in some part of a structure that's going to be very difficult to maintain? And we looked at different ways that we could preserve a piece of the grandstands or a piece of the press box or a piece of the box office, and it's just a very difficult thing to do.
I guess, so my question again is, if the grandstand can't be saved outside of just the little open plaza in the field, what other plans do we have so we'll know how much room we need to modify so it can all be preserved for a future building?
Well, it's all going to be green space out there, so it's about- Well, it's all going to be green space out there, so it's about, the entirety of it is available for redevelopment. What Alan would like is to have all of that green space out there so he can host festivals.
Yeah, the designation, as Kyle has explained, is, and again, I think there's two issues and maybe there's actually three issues. There's the grandstand and the situation there. It's the historical landmarking of what is done. And then, it's the celebration and commemoration of the historic moments. Those are three separate kind of issues. So the only one, it doesn't preclude us from doing anything else if the action is approved today. It's our land, it's your land, it's citizens' land. We can have more debate or more discussion about, in the future, about what we want to do to, you know, commemorate that. That is still open. It's, you know, not, anything we're doing today is going to prevent us from doing that.
And actually, before you were elected, how this originally came about was we determined that the Citrus Bowl was going to encroach into the field, so Tinker Field would not be usable as a baseball field. So we had McCracken. So the original idea that came out was, let's build something really nice over at McCracken that replicates the historic nature of Tinker Field on that side. And that kind of got totally lost in this discussion over the last several months, so we pretty much put that on hold. But the original idea was to replicate some historic form of bleachers or stadium on what we would call Tinker McCracken or McCracken or Tinkin'. And that's what they ended up doing in Sanford, in the stadium that Jackie Robinson played in. They replicate, they didn't keep the original field, they replicated something that was historic in nature. And we could still do that at some point.
Commissioner Ains?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, you know, y'all pretty much know what I'm going to say, concerning this whole issue. And Doug, I really want to thank you for your presentation that shows and it really builds a case of malfeasance on behalf of the city and the venues department. For the past 15 years, we have done nothing to improve Tinker Field. But now, all of a sudden, we have an idea that we can get rid of the grandstands and make a field out there so we can do more concerts and all of this kind of thing. But we're totally neglecting our history. And that's the key for me and specifically within the Black community. The grandstands are important and so is the field important. See, when the people heard Dr. Martin Luther King speak in 1964, over 50 years ago, that was the first time that he had ever spoken in Orlando concerning civil rights. And right now, I'm still battling civil rights issue today, dealing with Tinker Field. Because of what's been presented to us by the city and the venues department clearly states that we don't care what the people say. We don't care what the people have to say. Even memorializing or putting up something that you think that we would be happy with is not a solution. McCracken Field was the practice field for Tinker Field. McCracken Field looks like a football field now because it's full of grass. It hasn't been kept up. There are no seats in McCracken Field right now, even for any small baseball game to occur. So we're only kidding ourselves and obviously, the venues department has put up this little pony, dog and pony show to show that we need to tear down the stadium and the grandstands, and I think it's wrong. Now, one thing that you did say in your report, Doug, and that was, it would cost about $10 million to bring the stadium up to code. So I say to the city, what is the problem in investing $10 million in the Black community to bring about the reconditioning of the grandstands? Poor press box, we let it go because of the termites and that kind of thing that's shown in the picture, but we did that over a period of time. Termites had to do that because of neglect. Termites had to do that because we did not repair, we did not do anything. Grandstands corroded over a period of time. It didn't take just yesterday for this stuff to happen. So we didn't do anything at all, Mayor, and I think it's really a travest, a mis-travesty of justice for our community as a whole. Because not only Blacks enjoy Tinker Field and its status and making it a historical landmark within the city of Orlando, but Whites do too. And so, so with that, you know, I kind of want to know too, specifically, where is this Wells-Bilt report? I have not seen this Wells-Bilt report as part of this presentation or anything like that, so that hasn't been submitted to me. And then, even for the July 8th report for the structural deficiencies of July 8th of 2014, I haven't seen anything there either. Now, the Historic Preservation Board had it right. They got it right. But we, this council, decided that we would influence the municipal planning board in coming up with its decision. And they followed suit. They were very political. And see, and one thing, even in the mess that I stated when I spoke before the municipal planning board, I stated specifically that the city of Orlando has invested over $400 million in the building of the Performing Arts Center. The city of Orlando has invested over $400 million in the building of the Amway Center. The city of Orlando has invested over $387 million in renovating the Citrus Bowl. And then, of course, we are now investing in building a soccer stadium somewhere between $80 and $110 million. But we cannot put $10 million in Tinker Field to bring it up to par, and I think it's a travesty of justice for all of the people. I have a real concern, and I would really plead with this council, that what we would do and should do is support the municipal, support the Historic Preservation Board's recommendation and that we should recommend that the designation of Tinker Field Complex as an Orlando Historic Landmark, as provided by the Historic Preservation Board's report. That's what we should do. And we should invest in Tinker Field and build this thing up. Even if the concerts don't use the grandstands as seats, you would still have a field just as you've done in the past years. And see, and revenue has come in from those concerts, but they have surely not gone back into making sure that Tinker Field had been repaired. And see, and that's a mis-travesty of justice for all of the people. Now, one significant event that has not occurred at Tinker Field for 15 years, 15 years, 15 years. The one significant event that has not occurred at Tinker Field for 15 years is the upkeep and the repair of Tinker Field. We have denied even our college students, our middle school, elementary school students, and even our semi-pro teams from coming into Tinker Field. Because there are some teams that want to find a home in Tinker Field, but we have significantly closed the door to them. We did not want to hear them. We did not want to hear what they had to say concerning Tinker Field. Now, in 1907 and 1908, Joe Tinker, who was a baseball player with the Chicago Cubs, helped the Cubs to win the World Series in those two years. Joe Tinker has a better marker in Greenwood Cemetery here in Orlando than what we've done for Tinker Field, and it is a shame. So we need to make sure that we, as this council, are doing the right thing in supporting the Historic Preservation Board and its recommendation because they are the Historic Preservation Board. The municipal planning board surely went political on us, and I was sad to see that. And only Mr. Martin got the point. He only got the point. And the other thing I would like to see is a video presentation of what Tinker looks like now. And then, let's have another video presentation of the $10 million that we put in Tinker Field to bring it up to par. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, additional questions for Kyle or maybe we can move on to discussion?
Commissioner Gray? Real quick one for Alan. Alan, we talked about the current stuff to renovate it. Have we looked at a range of pricing for options B and/or C to get the field up to speed, to maintain the field, to do a memorial of some type and maintain that? Rough numbers or is it too early for that?
I think it's a little too early. We know some of the costs and, again, the memorialization or the commemoration, whatever we want to use, is still in discussion stage. It's part of the, you know, would be part of the process, whatever action the council takes. So, it's a little early to say. I do know what the impact of losing these events that are, we know that.
That's fair. Thank you.
Alan, do you remember off the top of your head what the construction estimate we had for McCracken when that was on the table?
$3 million, Mayor. That included like precast stands, restrooms, locker rooms, it was a, you know, full complex.
Mayor, do you want to move into discussion?
Yeah, we can move into discussion.
May I start?
You may.
Thank you, and I'll be very brief, because I want to hear from folks that have taken the time to come here and thank you for coming and we want to listen. But look, I understand the emotional piece of it, the part I'm struggling with and hopefully somebody can educate me today is, where is the demand? There, you know, I understand what some of the commissioners have said, is perhaps had we kept it in better shape, there would be more people there? Perhaps. But it seems to me, in my experience in the private sector, if there's an opportunity out there, I'm curious, Alan and his team, how many people have come to you and asked you, hey, if you'll renovate Tinker Field, I'll bring baseball, I'll produce revenue? I'm not seeing, excuse me, I'm not seeing a demand for that product. Yes, I understand the emotion, but from an economic standpoint, is that the best use of our resources? Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just share a couple of quick things and, Sam, I guess probably on this council, you and I are the old people now on this council, been around town just a little bit longer than most everybody else. Let me share a couple of things. In my discussions in the last five or six months with my constituents in District 3, they want us to do something that's historically representative, but they do not want to invest the money in trying to make that field playable. Let me make sure that we are on the same page. You cannot play baseball on that diamond. You cannot play little league baseball, you cannot play high school baseball. If you keep a right field at 240 feet, you cannot play baseball on that diamond. You can do a little scrimmage game with little league, even in the lowest level of little league, it requires a 245-foot fence, it has to be semicircle, it has to be six feet high. So you cannot do that where the home plate currently is. That's just simply fact. You can't play a high school game there, because a high school game requires a minimum of 300 feet. It requires 300 feet from home plate to the outfield, it requires a minimum, although it could be played in bigger fields, it requires a minimum of a minimum of, I mean, a minimum of eight-foot-high fence. So when we look at what we're getting ready to do, which is, I understand, if ideas you want to spend $10 million on a building that cannot be used for baseball, my constituents have said, don't do that. And I'm going to follow their lead. Do not do that. That is a waste of effort, it's a waste of that tax dollars. Now, do I think that we can do something different? Yes. There are people in this community that have decided that I apparently am the mayor's lackey and I'm going to do whatever the mayor wants to do. It's unfortunate that those people actually don't read what I write, Doug, nor Mike, do they read what I actually write. Because I would prefer for you actually take my words and use my words as opposed to your words about me. I get a little offended by that, if you don't mind. I also get offended when people bring up my father and what they think my father would be proud of. Interesting comment, Doug. Because I'm not sure you even knew my father, Doug, so thank you for bringing that up. And it gets me a little angry. So those of you who are not in the building, I have a private, I have a public email from Mr. Head that tells me he thinks my father would be in favor of the following, Doug, a cheap shot. Cheap shot. And I don't appreciate that. You can talk about issues, but you don't talk about personality. It's a cheap shot. So, go back to the issue at hand. The issue is, are we willing to spend $10 million to take a building and renovate it for no public purpose? Because you cannot play baseball there. I think that there are plenty of other options still yet available to us. I would like to see something a little bit kind of, you know, modified. I think there are some issues that we could move forward on, on this one. I think it's, my thought today is to look at trying to defer this until we have a little bit better feel for the community, maybe now that we've seen this and be able to present this to our communities and see what their response is and see what they think. I am more concerned that Roberto Clemente's last baseball game in the United States was played on that field. That's simply not, I think we ought to commemorate that candidly. I am concerned that when you ask Martin Luther King's family about where he spoke in Orlando, Florida, Tinker Field's not even on there. So when you begin to start looking at the historical portion of this, all of that needs to be having some type of commemoration in a way that is appropriate to our community. I'm concerned also that when you begin to start having historical places, you don't put them behind fences. So we have to create a space that is open to the public, that's the reason why it's historical. That was probably the first and most important thing that was said last spring in front of the MPB, was that you don't create historical places and then make them, then hide them behind a fence and people can't get to them. Making a park there makes a little bit more sense to me that the community has an option to get there. So all those things are there. And so, Mayor, I, you know, you, we can decide this, I guess, probably officially in the gender review, but I would prefer to defer this action. I would prefer to look at a couple of other actions in the future. I know that that may create a little bit of a strain in terms of what we're doing in terms of concert promotion and those kind of things. But I believe that this entire complex ought to come forward, coming forward, I understand the process, but coming forward in piecemeal creates a level of distrust of the city council that I think is probably inappropriate. We ought to bring it all together with, here's what our plan is, here's what it's going to cost, here's how we're going to accomplish that task. But I think that for people to continue to say, you can take and put $10 million on that building and play baseball, you simply cannot. The last story I'll share with this is a story that came from a major league franchise who talked about bringing in a double-A state, a double-A team down here. And when they came down to look at where were they going to play and the renovations of doing Tinker Field, the major league team franchise owner said, if I had known that you think you're going to play baseball at Tinker Field, this is prior to the other stuff, this happens, goes back two or three years ago, if I had known that you thought we were going to play baseball in Tinker Field, I simply would not have come to Orlando. We are not playing baseball in Tinker Field. So those are the things that are fact. We can make our decision somewhere along the time in the future. But I, Mayor, at the gender review, I would recommend that we defer this particular action until sometime in the future, when we can get some of those other issues identified and promoted and brought to this council at that time. Thank you.
And I will say, Commissioner, that the timing of this was actually brought about by Historic Preservation Board kind of starting this. There's, other than Alan being able to negotiate with people that want to bring festivals there, there was no real timing issue related to this, other than if we are going to demolish it, it would be significantly cheaper to demolish it while the contractor for the Citrus Bowl is mobilized and able to accomplish that task. They did a pretty good job on demolishing the lower bowl, the Citrus Bowl, in about, what, 45 days or so. Commissioner Sheehan?
Thank you, Mayor. And another thing that I'm a little bit confused about is that we don't take actions at workshops because we don't have public input. And why we have this before us right now, to have an action before city councils, the And why we have this before us right now, to have an action before city councils, the first, I've been here fourteen years, this is the first time I've ever seen an action come before a workshop, we don't have public comment.
What action are we taking, Commissioner?
Well, it says, action before council. Today, on the last page of the presentation.
Yeah, it's during the city council meeting, at two o'clock.
For later, okay, well, that's a good clarification to have, because that's, that was confusing the way that that was.
This is a workshop, we can't make motions, we can't take actions, all we can take is input.
Yes, sir, that's precisely why I made that comment. So now I'm going to make my comments. You know, I do feel that this whole issue with Tinker Field has been demolished by neglect. I concur with Commissioner Ings that fourteen years of no maintenance, if I had been in my house for fourteen years and not done a bit of maintenance, I think I would have gotten some code enforcement violations. So again, it's just part of, and I live in a nineteen twenty-eight bungalow, if you have an old building, you need to maintain it. And I am, I will reiterate the fact that I'm concerned that there is no presentation from our Historic Preservation Officer when this is an action of the Historic Preservation Board, and there could have been some opportunities for clarification on the capital cost, the fact that, again, there's a half million dollars in revenue coming in from concerts is a good thing, but none of that money, like Commissioner Ings said, was put back into the facility, that's a shame. And if we had done a similar study, like I say, this demolition by neglect kind of study, on many of the buildings that we have across this city, we'd be demolishing everything. I think it was definitely a study that was done with a demolition in mind. It's a shame, I see them all the time on historic buildings, a developer will come in and come in and do a gloom and doom on termites. I got to tell you, as someone who lives in an old house, you've got termites in it, it's going to happen, and you can fix it too. I concur with Commissioner Ings that we can do billions of dollars in facilities, but we can't figure out a way to fix this facility, I think it's a shame. Whether it can be utilized or not, whether it's a good use of ten million dollars, is a discussion that this council needs to have, especially if it can't be used. But again, that decision to make the ball field unusable was done without council input, because that was presented as part of putting these walkways in, and we didn't even know about that, that was going to render the ball field unusable. Again, that was something that we did not have input on, on the footprint for the Citrus Bowl as a master plan. We look at master plans all the time, this would have been something that would have been appropriate to look at as part of the master plan, to see how we're going to utilize all the facilities. I know that historic facilities do have some level of excusing from code updates because they're historic, and that's something else that was not looked into. And it could have, and even if we're looking at just as used as a passive park with just the diamond, that was not presented to us in terms of what the maintenance cost would be to go to Commissioner, oh gosh, Gray, to Commissioner Gray's point, we weren't even presented what, just to do the ball field itself and to maintain that as a passive park, we weren't even presented that as an option today in terms of what's here. So, again, we had a landmark application that was done, the Historic Preservation Board, the Historic Preservation Board then did a recommendation to the Municipal Planning Board to landmark the field and the grandstands. At the Municipal Planning Board, it was dumbed down even more, was, some of that was taken down, that scope was taken out of the grandstands for fiduciary purposes, which I don't agree with as a historic preservationist. I don't believe that you should take things out just because it costs more money. We have some beautiful buildings in downtown that cost more money. Ford Keeney did a beautiful job on the Green Building, and the Rogers Building, I think it's called, and that cost a lot of money to renovate, but he did the right thing because he wanted to have a beautiful historic building. Sometimes it costs more. But again, it came, you know, the recommendation that comes to us, and then further, at council, it seems like the only thing that there's a will to do is this strange little ball, baseball-looking thing, and not have any interest in preserving the field in any way, shape, or form. It just seems like it just got chipped away, and chipped away, and chipped away, and if you keep chipping away at the process, at the end of the day, you've got nothing left. And that's kind of where we're at with Tinker Field here. We've got, by the time we have whittled this down, we've got nothing left. And, you know, if Electric Daisy is not using the grandstands of the restrooms, why can't we use another part of the Citrus Bowl facility then, if we need to have a place for concerts? There's a lot of things in this, there's a lot of moving parts in this that we, as the council, have not had an opportunity to really look at and evaluate. And as far as the government not being able to take action with interfering with the contract, we are the contract people that allow the contract. That's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. I'm on the city council, of course we grant contracts, we should be able to have input on that. You know, we are decision makers in this city. I think that's kind of ridiculous to say that we can't have input on any kind of contracts. Gosh, across the street on the Performing Arts Center, they're having change orders all the time over there, and that's not considered an interfering with the contract, even though it has created some delays in the way that even the Performing Arts Center is being done. So I just, I just find that to be kind of silly. We were not presented the cost of maintaining the field alone. This has been very confusing, the way that this is presented today. And on McCracken, and I don't understand how it could cost three million dollars to build a brand-new facility at McCracken, but nine million dollars to renovate this other facility, and there's been no motion, or no mention of possibly using some of the grandstands, and, you know, there's ways to take parts of historic buildings and reutilize them. We could have taken maybe some of the seats and new grandstands and things like that if we really cared about a baseball facility, but it doesn't seem that that's really what's...
We talked about that in January, by the way, Commissioner.
Well, but it's not part of this presentation, so that's the concern that I have.
We took McCracken off the table for now, we're talking about Tinker.
Well, as, okay, well, and again, if I could please be allowed to make my statements, I think that I'm on city council, I've been elected, independently elected, by forty-seven thousand people in my district, and I think I have the right to speak. Thank you. And again, I think these people who came today have the right to speak as well, and we should be able, we shouldn't be afraid of hearing input from the public, you know, and, you know, and the other thing I'd just like to say, and I'm not, I'm not looking for applause, I feel strongly about this, I feel very, very strongly about this process. People say mean things about me all the time. The way I look at that is, even a broke clock is right twice a day. And we should be, we should be able to hear from people who have a passionate feeling about baseball, who might have the ability to bring us information on this Ripken Foundation thing, I'd like to hear from them before we make any kind of a decision. So, you know, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful to anyone, I just feel that, you know, this is part of my job, and I want to be able to do my job effectively for my constituents. And it's not against anybody, it's not for anybody, it's just a process that I feel has been very much influenced inappropriately. Thank you.
Commissioner Sheen and Commissioner Ings, ultimately, it doesn't matter what the Historic Preservation Board or the MPB said, it's what the city council said, so it's the vote of the people that were actually elected to make those decisions, and I have no idea what Commissioner Sheen was just talking about, because every person that signed up here is going to be able to speak, so in terms of limiting public participation, I'm not sure exactly what you were talking about. What we will do is, we'll adjourn this public workshop, and we'll immediately convene the agenda review meeting, and the first item of business on the agenda review is public comment on items that are on the consent agenda.
Okay, I have a number of people that would like to speak on the consent agenda. It looks like most of them are on item C six, which are the MPB minutes, which relate, I assume, specifically to the Tinker Field item. Okay, Jose, let's go.
Who am I going to be first?
You're first, you turned your card in first.
Oh, my God.
You didn't wait to try to be last, like some dude.
Good morning, city council meeting, how you guys doing today? First want to thank Commissioner Hill and Bodie Dyer for that event that they have with the kids fighting poverty. That was very good, I'm really proud of you, but we're here to talk about...